It is 5:48 on October 23rd, 2024. I'll call this meeting of the Morton County Planning and Zoning Commission to order.
Are there people online?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Natalie, would you?
Apologies to anybody online. We were having issues getting logged in. Hence the late start. They can still hear me, yeah.
They just can't talk.
Okay, start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Zach Meyer.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Buckley.
Yes.
Brown is absent. Berger.
Here.
Rohr.
Here.
Tomac.
Here.
Wald.
Here.
I am here. Uh, approval of tonight's agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, approval of the minutes from September 25th.
Move to approve the minutes for September 25th, 2024 meeting, Mr. Chairman.
All second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Alright Natalie, item number one.
Okay, our first item is the Raider Skoria Mining Special Use Permit. This is in the west half of Section 3, Township 140 North, Range 90 West. The applicant is Paul Raider. Uh, this is located in the far northwest corner of Morton County on the border with Oliver County. Um, so County Road 90, uh, is the property there. The current zoning is agricultural. The future land use designation is also agricultural. This is 238.5 acres, um, except he's probably just gonna use like the more southern half of it. Um, he would like to just start mining Skoria, um, having, like using it for local purposes, local private drives and so forth. He doesn't have a commercial outlet for it yet, um, but we do appreciate him coming in for a permit, like he should. So this is kind of the environment. Um, this is 31st, uh, Hebron Brick Company has clay mines, um, one here and they haul out on 31st, one on the southern property and then one out here. Um, I had contacted them and they didn't get back to me with details about how active these were, how often they haul out of them, but the applicant had said that, um, he has observed them hauling five or so trucks for two weeks in the fall and that's kind of all they do.
That's what they do.
So, um, so not a ton of activity, but, um, I had one call from a person who said they were kind of concerned about, um, this new application and hauling on 31st. Um, it is already being used by one mine. Um, this is closer to the road. Um, it didn't sound like the applicant wanted to be using this 24/7 all the time, just kind of as needed for local purposes. Um, of course, if we do permit the Skoria mine, we're permitting any and all mining, so, um, that's something I put in your packet as a question, you know, do you wanna maybe limit the volume of trucks coming out, um, to a certain frequency instead of just leaving it open-ended? Um, that's one consideration. So... There are two residences here and here, and then the next closest is over there. So, always away. Um, staff is recommending approval with some conditions. Um, staff is suggesting hours of operation limited from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., um, that they shall control dust as directed by the county engineer, uh, that if customers are allowed to pick up Skoria on the property, that the applicant, um, delineates where the pickup area is and stockpiles Skoria there versus having them go into the mining portion, um, separated from mining areas, and that at the end of operations, the applicant, uh, has to reclaim the property such that there are no steep drop-offs or open pits. And then again, if you wanted to limit volumes, that can be a whole discussion. And I can take any questions.
Any questions for Natalie?
Chairman Natalie, is there a right bit of Skoria in this particular area? I thought it was more to the western part of the state.
So, when you look at it, you can kind of see, um, like, the, like what's sticking up that isn't tilled. And so he, he said, you know, it'll be kind of obvious where those areas are. So there's, I mean, there, and there is Skoria, there's Skoria down south of Hebron, there's some up here. He has not, um, done any testing, um, to figure, or coring or whatever, to figure out, um, how much is there. He's just pretty confident that there is some there. Um, and he has a, an acquaintance that has a loader and, um, excavator and they're just gonna use minimal equipment to take it out in small loads.
I mean, this is his land though. I mean, for that coal mine in the county, they gotta do reclamation of the land stuff. He's not under any, any obligations for that because of it's his land, right?
So usually, like usually you're gonna have a commercial entity taking it out, yeah, and then you, they are going to restore it to the way that the lessor wants it to be restored. Um, so yes, just for safety reasons, it's probably best not to have big, um, craters. Uh, not that I think he's gonna mine that way, but you know, just to restore it, just for safety purposes, doesn't have to be fancy.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, um, the county dentist just opened another pit south of Glenallin, um, because we didn't get the lease for the prior Skoria pit, and so we're opening up a new one from another different gentleman. And so that's happening south of Glenallin. I guess I'll say that we do get several complaints on that road as far as, on 90, um, for maintenance of that road. And so there will be some concerns about people complaining about hauling on that road and the dust. Especially happens when the, when the brick company starts to haul.
Mm-hmm. And that's why I put, um, you know, if the county engineer directs that they need to do something about dust, then they'll just have to, so, as part of the conditions.
Natalie, what is the county's threshold for requiring a permit in this case?
We don't have a set minimum. It's just if you're gonna take any kind of aggregate out, you're supposed to get a permit, so.
Which is pretty vague, right, when it's your own property?
Yes, it's vague. But I think, I think that he intends to do it more than, you know, just someone who's using it for themselves. And I always encourage, you know, that they get the permit because then if people are complaining, it's like, well, we sent notices, we had a hearing, we evaluated it, and nobody spoke up and, you know, being concerned at, at that time. So it's kind of protects the landowner as well.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Natalie? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? And anybody online can just unmute and speak whenever you'd like.
Hi, I'm Tammy, and I have land, um, close by. And I was just wondering what the, who takes care of the roads then? Because obviously when there's heavy equipment running over the roads, there's more damage to them. Um, does Morton County just take care of the roads then? Or, I'm talking about, you know, I don't know if they're section line roads or whatever, but... That, that, that would be my question.
So the county does maintain County Road 90, and I assume they maintain 31st Street as well?
I think that's a section line road.
Yep. Um, and so we're, the county maintains County Road 90, and it's bladed as, as needed? Or when it's, uh, when, as requested? Is that what your question is, or?
Well, yeah, I mean, I just, you know, there's lots of times more damage to the roads when there's heavy equipment going on it. And so I guess I was just wondering if, you know, as long as that's being taken care of by Morton County, then that's not a concern.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy. Okay, second call for the hearing. Third and final call, and I will close the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, Natalie, um, so John, the county engineer is aware of this and he's, have you talked to him about it?
So, I do, I mean, I, I send out my emails to all the stakeholders.
Yep.
Um, I did mention, I actually asked him in terms of, do we need Skoria, you know? Um, and he said, not that far out, you know, maybe someday we'll get to the point where we're willing to go that far. But, so, he was aware that there was an application there and didn't say he was concerned about 90. I think probably because it's, they don't have a commercial project, you know, lined up where, and so that's why I say, maybe we wanna set some kind of threshold where if it exceeds a certain frequency of truckloads, you know, that we have them bump it up or reapply or reassess, um, in some way. Or just that that triggers them to have to have a conversation with the county, um, like the road department about some kind of agreement for maintenance.
Well, the county crushes theirs, and so I can't, maybe it won't, he won't be able to sell a whole lot if it's not crushed.
Right.
And so maybe it's just something more for his own use.
Mm-hmm, and neighbors.
And neighbors.
Yep, that's what it sounded like.
Ready for motion?
I move to recommend approval of this special use permit for Skoria extraction from the west half, Section 3 Township, 140 North, Range 90 West, on the west side of County Road 90, with the following conditions, as the subject property is in a remote location and similar activities are taking place nearby. First, that the hours of operation be limited to 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Secondly, applicant can shall control dust as directed by the county engineer. Third, if the customers are allowed to pick up Skoria on property, that the applicant shall designate an area for stockpiles and pickup, distanced and separated from the mining area. And number four and last, at the end of the operations, applicant shall reclaim the property such that there is no steep drop-off or open pits. Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number two.
Our next item is the Koenig Commercial Sign Special Use Permit. This is in the southeast quarter of Section 33, Township 137 North, Range 81 West. The applicants are Spence, Koenig, and Jay Wardner. This is located on the northwest corner of Highway 6 and 54th Street, so, um, one mile north of St. Anthony, and then this is the Northern Lights Dairy there for reference. So that's the, the property that they're looking to put a commercial sign on. So that's rough together, um, approximately, um, what they're going for. Um, they would be advertising the uses that are in that limited industrial park that, um, was previously approved, so there's four lots there. Um, and then they would have a digital, a changeable digital sign on the bottom of the sign. Um, so it'd be seven feet roughly off the ground, nine feet tall, and then seven feet wide. So... Hard to see in the shadow there, but, so that's, um, Highway 6, and then this is their existing building that they have there. And they have a sign here, which I would say is probably about six feet tall, maybe. Um, so you can see for reference like how tall that looks. And then the sign would be roughly in that location, but just bigger. So, um, we, in our land use code, we only have language that talks about billboards, so off-premise commercial signs. Um, the code is pretty much silent on all other kinds of signs, and we definitely, um, wanna get a sign ordinance on the list of to-dos, but don't have one yet. So, um, we're going through the special use permit process so that we can set the precedent that if you have something that is digital, if it's large enough that someone can walk under it, if it's on a major highway, that we would want to review anything coming in with those characteristics and treat them the same. Um, so staff, in staff's estimation, and because I received no communications about this after public notices were sent, um, that it is perfectly fine in that location. Um, and so staff recommends, uh, just simple conditions, that the dimensions not exceed 125% of those presented, just in case the sign changes a little bit, you know, it doesn't have to be exact. Um, that they get plans from an engineer to make sure that it's gonna withstand our North Dakota winds, and then obtain a building permit for the sign. And with that, I can take questions.
Any questions for Natalie?
It's off of the high, uh, right-of-way of the highway? Now, that I don't know without a survey. Do you guys happen to know? I think it's probably off, but...
I think you can see in the picture by the powerline folder, there's the right-of-way marker.
Okay, yep.
And we will be to the west of it, off, off.
Okay.
So just next to it. And they, I should've mentioned that too. Um, so, NDOT, because it's a state highway, they require a local zoning approval of signs. Um, so they're going through this process too, so that I, if approved, I can sign that, um, release for them.
Any other questions for Natalie? Okay, not seeing any. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Anybody online can just unmute and speak whenever you'd like. Second call for the hearing. Third and final call, and I will close the hearing. Wishers, your wishes?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to recommend approval of a special use permit to allow a permanent commercial sign not to exceed 125% of the dimensions submitted in the application with the following conditions. Applicant, number one, applicant must consult with an engineer to draw up stamp plans for the sign, to ensure sign is adequately constructed and anchored. Applicant must sign, excuse me, must obtain a building permit for the sign.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number three.
Okay, so it's about that time of year again, where we are making meeting schedules for next year. So, um, I have a proposed, um, set of dates in your packet. That's totally up for discussion. Did, and we can see if we liked the Wednesdays or not. Um, I am just, as you're contemplating, I'm looking up Easter holiday. I did not, I did not think about that when we, when I put the schedule together. So Easter is April 20th, so that would be, yeah. And then, um, our meeting would be the 23rd, so probably not a problem there. Yeah, and then just exceptions for November and December. So do we like the fourth Wednesday of the month?
Yes, I did.
Yeah. I, I think, I think we need to do it some more so I get used to it. I liked it, but I keep forgetting.
I have had some complaints about it being on Wednesday.
Mm-hmm. Dwayne, is it working for you?
Yeah, no, it's been fine for me.
Does that work?
Do you need a motion, Natalie, or?
I just wanna know if I can publish this, if we, by consensus or whatnot.
Sure.
Well, I'll make a motion in that for year 2025, that the Morton County Planning and Zoning Commission meeting scheduled be as presented by Natalie, which, uh, basically consists of the fourth Wednesdays of the month with the exception of November, December holidays. All second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, not seeing any. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number four.
Okay, and then we're back to that time of year again for performance evaluations. So for anybody who wasn't here before the meeting, um, if you want a paper copy, I do have a paper copy. Otherwise, I did email the form out to everyone. So if you can get those back to Jackie, and Jackie, would you, what date would you like people to get them back to you so that, um, 'cause the HR date was November 15th?
Yep. Yeah, so her date was November 15th.
Maybe end of October?
Yeah. Well, we go November 1st.
Sounds good.
That's the first Friday in November.
Yep.
So if everybody can return them to Jackie by the first, that would be great.
Jackie, do you prefer the forms completed or just like a brief write-up summary?
If you wanna do a write-up, I'm okay with that, just so that I have something to present to Wendy.
Yeah, just wondering if you actually like go through and score everything based on those. I think those have scoring criteria, but sometimes, in my opinion, they're a little clunky to actually fill out.
And this one, so I should point out that this year it got shortened.
Oh.
'Cause I think in the past, it was definitely too long, or, you know, like it was cumbersome for people.
And confusing, the scoring criteria.
And I think now, there's only like seven, let's see, I haven't looked at it. Ten, there's like ten things. Um, and then there's room to put comments. So, yeah, I think, I think it, uh, there were probably similar comments to yours. So it got adjusted.
Awesome. Okay.
I'll try and remember, Mr. Chairman, to send you guys a reminder.
Perfect.
So, thank you.
Thanks, Jackie.
We wouldn't have to use artificial intelligence for that, would we?
You know what, Natalie, can you send the reminder? Because if I send it, I, I like to send as a group.
That's why, yep.
Then I don't have to worry about open meetings. I'll remind everybody on Wednesday. Perfect, thank you.
Yes. That's it on that one. And then...
And that wasn't even on the agenda, so that was, uh...
Oh, whoops, okay.
Mystery item.
Never mind, mystery item, so four.
Three B.
So four, actually, we were on four. Four is land use code updates. Um, there's lots of pages. Um, I had made the tweaks that were suggested last time. Um, the Larson's Deb had sent me, so after publishing those changes, she had sent me a couple minor things that I then changed again. Um, and I will point out, and, and she can speak for herself, but it sounded like those changes were satisfactory. Um, and so the changes were on 55 specific use standards for the accessory dwelling unit. Just to clarify, that accessory dwelling units are not allowed in places where there are hazards to residential development, as opposed to being identified in a plan of any kind as, in a special area. So they just, they don't belong. I changed the wording to try to make that more clear. So, as posing a hazard to otherwise limiting the potential for residential development due to concern for public safety. Um, yeah, I don't know if that's clearer or less clear, but basically trying to point out that, um, we just don't want accessory dwelling units in risk-prone areas. And then pointed out our definition on page 163 of accessory dwelling unit, that it didn't include any mention of like a living room. And I guess my reading of that would be, it would have these other areas, but then it leaves it kind of unclear, can you have a living room or not? So I said, and optional additional living space, so people can have more than what's listed if they wish. And I think those were the only changes. So that, that is published, so the, all the changes are published in your packet.
Chairman Natalie, so we can talk about the only change. The last time we went through it, these are the additions, deletions, or changes that occurred after our last meeting.
So I should clarify, um, when I sent out the packet, the e-packet, um, that included changes from last meeting that we had talked about. And then in between Friday, when I sent the e-packet, and today in this packet, I changed those couple things that I mentioned, just a little bit based on, um, Deb's feedback. Um, but the complete changes now are in the packet you have in your hand, the paper packet.
And then where you go from here then?
So if you guys like these changes, then we can send them to County Commission, and they can discuss adopting them. Um, I have published these twice, or you know, reviewed them twice. If there's stuff that is sticky and you think it needs more work, then we can bring some or all parts back for more discussion.
Natalie, can you jump back to, I think, page 55?
Mm-hmm. Maybe it got more clunky, instead of less clunky.
Yeah, I just, so are we talking, um, was it, which one was it again?
So part two, so it'd be standards for residential district, um, so it's C, but then C2. So the lot upon which the ADU is to be constructed, um, does not lie within the special flood hazard area.
Yeah.
Harm and lake dam breach inundation zone, or any other area identified within any planned policy document or resolution adopted by Morton County as posing a hazard or otherwise limiting the potential for residential development due to concern for public safety, with the following exception. If any, if only a portion of the subject property that lies within the special, special flood hazard area is also the portion of the property that lies within the building setback from the Missouri River, then ADU is not automatically prohibited. 'Cause we have, um, quite a number of lots along the Missouri River where it is, the, the floodplain portion is just like the bank, and you can't build in that area anyway. You know, so it doesn't automatically eliminate those properties.
Okay, so that, okay, that was gonna be my question, because we talked about that if a lot contains special flood hazard area, it doesn't eliminate the entire lot.
Right, right. So, so really, all that is, all that is giving, so to speak, is, so if the special flood hazard area is somewhere in the building setback, which happens to be 100 feet from the ordinary high water mark, so that's the building setback. So here's the ordinary high water mark.
Right.
100 feet back from that, if that portion in between is the only part of the lot that's in the special flood hazard area, then they're good to go.
But do we need to, and we're probably splitting hairs whether this would ever come up, but it, it still seems to me that we're sort of saying if the lot contains special flood hazard area, you can't have an ADU with, other than that one exception.
Right.
So like, in other areas, like, um, thinking even...
If it's got a tiny bit.
Right, like do we need to be clear that, I mean, the building site can be outside of the special flood hazard area and still be an ADU, or still be acceptable?
Yeah, and I mean, I don't know if there's a percent, you know, maybe there's a percent. The only thing is, um, well, and they do have to apply. I mean, they have to apply for an ADU permit. Um, so I mean, we could say something very broad, like 50% or something, or we could say...
But aren't we most concerned just where it's going? Just like if somebody is building a house on a lot that has floodplain?
Also though, you know, say you have a lot that got approved, let's say the maps change, and now all of a sudden you have issues even getting to that lot, you know, based on floodplain. You don't wanna allow yet another structure there. Um, but, I mean, and we could say too, it's up to the discretion of the floodplain. and we could say too, it's up to the discretion of the floodplain administrator.
Yeah, right.
You know, or we could say it's this, and then you can get a variance.
Right, because I have some concern about, you know, implementing regulations on lots when the regulation should really be only pertaining to the special flood hazard area, right, not the parcel shape.
Right. I just, I guess I don't, I don't want to leave it too open where it's like, okay, you have this entitlement to be able to put one there when you really shouldn't, if it's a floodplain concern. You know what I'm saying? So I... Yeah. Again, if it, if it is something where it's like at the discretion of the floodplain administrator, but then I don't want, yeah, that can be appealed, you know.
But isn't this how we, like, so for instance, if somebody owns a parcel and has a portion of it with 100-year floodplain on it, they still have entitlement to build, but as part of their building permit application process, they have to identify...
They have to elevate, and they have to go through the floodplain development permit process.
So wouldn't it be the same thing?
That's true.
We're applying, we have it, but we're proposing to put it up on the hill or above the, I mean, defer to you, you know the process better. I just...
Yeah, the only thing is, I guess, I don't want to give an entitlement for a second house in a location that is flood-prone.
Right, but the flood, we wouldn't be giving it in a flood-prone location. It'd be the portion of the parcel that's above the special flood hazard.
Right.
Right? Or at least that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, and I guess I'm thinking of situations where it's like, okay, maybe you have a conforming lot, your entire lot is in the flood zone, and we really would rather not encourage you to develop there. But then they're like, okay, I'll get a loma, I'm going to build up all this dirt, and then oh, lo and behold, that part is out, you know?
Then it's out. They've got the loma.
Right, but, but I guess what I'm saying is, we, we don't encourage new subdivisions in the flood zone. So if it's a flood, the special flood hazard area, our policy in the long-range plan is to not approve new subdivision lots, new long-form subdivisions in those areas. So I see this as something of a similar issue, where it's like, we don't want more houses in that area.
Right, and I understand, at least where my head is going is we have, I think it's all mapped, but at least portions, or quite a bit of the Hart River, Sweetbrier Creek, I think, has some mapped. Maybe it's only backwater of the Hart and the Missouri parts of water.
More so by Glen Allen, actually, if you're going like inland, like Sweetbrier probably isn't too bad, but like over by Glen Allen.
Yeah, you're, you're right. And so I guess what I'm getting is parcels, that may be large parcels, but they contain, maybe one of those water bodies bisects it, crosses it, then it contains special flood hazard area, but maybe a majority or a large portion of it is outside of that. So I don't know why we would prohibit an ADU on that parcel just because a fraction of it contains special flood hazard area. You could go do a subdivision and split the lot in half, and the half that is outside of it would now have that entitlement, but that, and the other half wouldn't.
Right.
So our, isn't our focus just making sure those ADUs aren't built within the special flood hazard area?
And I would say not just, you know, I mean, in places where there is flood, higher flood risk, we don't want to concentrate more development.
Right, but this isn't about subdivisions, is it?
Well, but you, you're putting a house there. That's more development.
But we're saying they can put a house. We're talking about ADUs.
Right, that is a house. That's another residence.
Right, but we're not saying that you can't put a house on a parcel that contains special flood hazard area. We're not changing that.
Sure.
We're just saying, you can do it, you just can't have an accessory dwelling unit.
Right.
And that part to me is a little confusing.
Mm-hmm. I guess what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to open up flexibility for people to have ADUs, but I don't want it to turn into, okay, let's say you have a subdivision of eight lots, it's all in the flood zone, and according to, like, if you're saying, well, you know, let's just kind of leave it open, then all of a sudden, you've made another eight-lot subdivision, in a sense, because each of those can have another residence on them. If you don't limit it somehow and say, this is not an area where we want to concentrate more residential development. In a sense.
Yeah.
You're concentrating more people living in that area, which is not what we want to do with the flood zone.
But we wouldn't be doing that if we said you can't put them in the flood zone. You have to put them on the dry parts of those parcels. So I guess I just, I'm...
Yeah.
Because, I mean, again, like, even where Larson's live, the properties are outside of the flood, floodway.
Yep.
But the floodway touches those parcels.
And that's what I'm saying, we're eliminating that.
For the Missouri and 100 feet off of the setback of the Missouri, but we're not saying in other cases where it might just be a floodplain, like, so now if we go to like the Toacash Timberhaven area, it's, it's different, but there's like the setback from the river.
I can, I can say we definitely don't want this in Toacash's Timberhaven. Like, that's a prime example of why not to allow that.
Right, but I'm just saying that there are floodplain considerations that are outside of the setback from the Missouri.
Yes, absolutely.
And that's, okay, I use Toacash, here's, here's a different one.
Yep.
Not to throw people's names out, but like Mark Taylor's property west of Mandan, most of it is in the floodplain.
Mm-hmm.
But then it rises up a huge bluff.
Yep.
And his house and his new shop is outside of the floodplain.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know why we would tell him that he wouldn't apply to this.
Yep.
Because most, he has high, dry, buildable areas on his parcel, but according to this, we would say, well, you can't put an ADU because part of your property has a special flood hazard area.
I guess what I might suggest is say, worded in such a way that you're, you've got an exception for that 100 feet. In all other cases, where there is some special flood hazard area on your lot, those determinations are made as part of the review process, the administrative review process.
I'm fine with that.
Does that sound good?
Yeah.
And I like that too, because they're all so different.
Right.
You know, and again, and I'll put wording in there, again, at the end, and it's already in here, at the end of this process, this review process, if you're an aggrieved party, you bring it to Planning and Zoning or County Commission at the next meeting and explain your case. So.
That makes sense, yeah.
Okay, yeah. And I guess we may at some point have some other hazard that comes about. So I think I kind of do want to still mention hazard in case, you know, maybe it's not water, maybe it's not flood hazard, but just we don't want to encourage ADUs in places where we have identified that area as a area that has a, poses a hazard to residential development. And I can word that in some way and bring that back, or just send that piece to the board before we send it to County Commission, if that, I mean, we'll go through this and we'll see if there's more spots, but that could be something maybe we solve in the interim.
I would say I agree with it, but making it as objective as you can.
Yes.
If it's a subjective regulation, it's a bit...
It's hard.
Yeah, challenging.
Okay, I'll take a stab at it, and then we'll send it, send it to everybody.
I do have some questions, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead. Sorry, I took over there.
No, that's okay, because it gets you thinking. So, when you're, what you were just talking about, so are you saying, like, if someone puts up an ADU, and that will be my next question, is exactly what is an ADU? I'm very confused. Because I'm thinking about Mark's little man cave there. Is that an ADU?
So, an accessory dwelling unit, we changed the definition. So the definition is on page, it's right, it's way at the back, page 163, accessory dwelling unit. So it says, "A separate, complete housekeeping unit with a separate entrance, kitchen, sleeping area, full bathroom facilities, and optional additional living space, which is attached to a principal building, garage, or shop, or detached, but on the same lot or tract as the principal residence."
Okay, so, I don't know, I think this is confusing. So like Mark's man cave there.
He doesn't have, his two new barns, I don't think he has like a...
I don't think there's living.
Right, it's probably, it might be ba, I know he's got bathroom.
But my point was, if like in one of his shops, he had wanted to include living.
Yeah, well, right.
He's out of the floodplain, so I wouldn't want to prohibit.
Yeah, I know that. Well, I'm just using him for...
Yeah, yeah, no.
But, okay, what if you just want to build a little cabin and have a bathroom, and every once in a while, the gals all come over and, and they, or you want, you're not actually living there, but you, you know, might stay like four or five nights or something, or just get away from your spouse or something, I don't know. But would that be considered an ADU?
If it has plumbing, probably. I mean, that'd be one of those things where it's gray, if it just has a bathroom and nothing else. That might just be a shop. I mean, that could be a shop, because it's like, that's what shops are. It's a space with a bathroom.
Right. I mean, if, if your, your spouse gets mad at you, he's going to go live in the shop for a while. I know someone that does that all the time.
That would probably be an accessory, that would probably just be an accessory building. That probably, that's not a dwelling unit. And you can already do that. You already have, you already can do that. We're talking about like a separate living unit, permanent living unit. That's what an accessory dwelling is, is to dwell in it, you know, like live in it permanently. Like if you had an elderly parent that you needed to care for, like handicapped child or something.
Okay, so what if, I know someone in a different county, they are adding on to their, I mean, it's within their building, but they're just adding a space for their relative.
Mm-hmm. That's it, that would be an attached accessory dwelling unit. And in this, in the specific use standards, we spell out attached versus detached.
Okay.
And which is which, you know, that you can, you can use your option.
Okay, so like you have a, an attached, so now what if the, a second person comes, and you want another space for that person, so you can't do it now? Because you can only have one?
Right. You can have principal structure and accessory structure, and, you know, or principal residence, accessory dwelling, and that's it. And that is the case. I mean, we don't want to get many residences on one lot. That's kind of what we've...
Well, what if they're, but what if you're, just have the bedroom and the bathroom, but they're still using the same kitchen and stuff?
So this is, this says distinctly separate. So a separate kitchen, separate...
Okay.
Um... Yeah.
Okay.
Separate, complete house, separate, complete housekeeping unit. So when we say housekeeping unit, we usually mean, and it's defined here, kitchen, sleeping, bathroom. That's a housekeeping unit.
And then going back to your stuff, what do you mean by a hazard or...
Special flood hazard area.
Well, I mean, where it's going to interfere with future development.
So in other words, we don't want to concentrate more residences in areas of the county that we've identified are hazardous for people to be living there. And so the only one we have right now is the special flood hazard area. That's all we have. I'm just saying, I'm leaving it open. Who knows, maybe we get sinkholes in Morton County or something. There's like sinkhole areas, or like landslides or something, you know, some new hazard that presents itself, that we just don't want to encourage residential development in those areas.
I didn't know if you meant, I don't know, because you might have to have a law on sharing thing or something. I don't...
No, no, just, just in general, if we have, and it spells out kind of in any, identified within any plan, policy, document, or resolution. So if it is a part of a plan that we have published, or part of an ordinance that we've published, and we've identified a risk area, that is what we're saying, we don't want ADUs in those risk areas that we have identified through plans and policies.
And it could come up, like you say, all of a sudden, there's like a sinkhole.
Yeah.
Or the river changes course or something, and whatever.
Or, I don't know, fire-prone areas or something.
Or that, yeah.
Yep. So, and so this is flexible, because it says any adopted plan. So if we adopt plans in the future, then automatically this applies to those plans.
Natalie, are there specific portions of this that you want to go through tonight? Or...
Nope. I made, I basically just made the changes that we had suggested last time. Other than that, it's the same. There, I guess the one thing I would point out, Maria kindly pointed out that I didn't finish a sentence about basements. And I, there is way too much information to put in here about basements. So I basically finished that by saying, let me find it here. Oh, it's on spills over from page 36 to 37. And I say at the end of part 2A, "The floodplain administrator shall determine the basement elevation consulting the most current FEMA technical bulletins." But that the basement counts as the lowest living space. That's the important piece to have in here, that the basement counts as the lowest living space. Which you really shouldn't have, but if you had one, you have to elevate it a whole lot. So that was the only, I would say, major change, other than what we had discussed.
So I do, Natalie, I do still have some concern, even though, like, I fundamentally like the idea of requiring two feet above the 100-year. I still think, I'm not sure how well advertised, I mean, I know it's, these are public, but I still think this change is relatively impactful, potentially to certain areas like on Willow Road, Rosie Lane.
Yep.
Um, Toacash Timberhaven. There's not a lot in Morton County, some on Lions Road. And I just wonder, I assume most or all of those people are completely unaware of this potential regulation change. And so I do have, I do have concern with that. I understand the HUD changes and Federal Housing Authority, but those do only account for about 15% of loans. So we are changing it to accommodate those, that relatively small window of potential mortgages, right? And we're also applying it to non-residential structures, which it didn't appear are covered by the HUD regulations.
Mm-hmm. Um, so if it helps at all, the state did send out a mass email to all the floodplain administrators and said, here's this thing, we encourage you to raise your free board to two if you have not already done that. So that was from the state.
Totally. I mean, I, it'd be advisable that everybody raise it to 10 feet, right? Like, it'd be a good idea. But I guess my concern is just like, we're taking a number of homes that are likely built, there's certainly some homes that are built one foot above BFE today.
And they don't have to change what's there.
Right, but if they substantially improve their home, they now effectively have to raise their house, or no longer improve it.
No, okay, hold on. Because the...
I mean, certainly when we talk about non-residential structures, it's the same thing, right? We're kind of tall encompassing.
Hold on one second. I gotta see what it says. The tall...
And I want to be clear, like, I'm not encouraging people to build closer to the base flood elevation. It's just, we've given...
That actually, so the substantial damage, substantial improvement, so FEMA's, FEMA's level is at BFE. That's their threshold. You know, state is one foot, our state in particular is one foot above. They're encouraging people to go to two feet above. So if they, I guess the point would be, if you're in the flood hazard area, we don't want to expand uses and concentration of development in the flood hazard area in general. And so it's like, okay, you're there, fine, keep your structure. If you're massively modifying this house that you have there, we want to discourage that from happening in general, regardless of how elevated or not elevated you are. And that... And that's just the pure, can you put on your addition or not? The elevation part is if, you know, so like, let's say you had a pre-firm structure. Just because we said we want new construction to be above two feet, you still can build out your addition on your pre-firm structure even as long as your addition is not more than this twenty-five percent. And actually, I apologize because I fixed the twenty-five percent in substantial improvement. And I did not fix it in substantial damage. That should be twenty-five percent because we talked about that.
Sorry, the twenty-five percent.
So in other words, that's the threshold. So you take your appraised value of your structure that's existing. And you say, if you're going to do an addition, that addition cannot be valued at more than twenty-five percent of the appraised value of the structure only.
Or improvements to the house.
Or improvements.
I mean, so that also comes into if there is a large flood that impacts the structures, they can't conceivably go in and just repair.
Right, it would be.
Somehow elevate it to meet the two feet.
To meet, yeah, to meet current, right. So it's more, it's more of a total loss situation, I think, that you're talking about, right?
Yeah, for the, I mean, yeah, I'm not saying it's not a bad idea. I'm just trying to acknowledge that we're just changing one foot to two feet. And people who in their mind are in compliance, they're a foot above BFE. We're going to change it to two feet so they can no la, no longer substantially improve their homes or their accessory structures, right? And that, I mean, that is impactful.
Yes.
And I don't feel like they know about it.
Okay. Um, should we, I mean, I'm pretty sure everybody's going to say, yeah, don't do that. And we can, we can have a hearing. Like, I can send a letter to every person who's got, you know, land in the floodplain. I don't know how many people that is, but we, I mean, we got rid of the rec zone at one point and I think we had four hundred and seventy-five people in this room, you know, or that's how many, or not in this room. That's how many letters went out.
And certainly, I mean, I understand it's, in some cases, we have to implement regulations that make sense. But, I mean, just due to the burden of us having a busy hearing, I don't.
Well, I'm not saying we shouldn't. I'm saying if you guys want me to do that, I can do that.
Yeah, I'm only giving my advice or thoughts on it. Just it's a number on paper, but it could be quite impactful to people's largest investment, so.
And, you know, if we don't like the non-residential, you know, if it's like your shed or whatever, we can change that to the same, you know, the one foot above. I just, I kind of like having everything the same so that people don't get confused.
Natalie, maybe, maybe one question I have, and I don't expect you to have the answer. But you mentioned that they sent, the state sent out an email to all the floodplain administrators. Do you know how many jurisdictions in North Dakota require two feet instead of one? I mean, I know City of Vismark does, and I think perhaps some.
And Minot, Minot has three.
Yep.
You know, obvious, for obvious reasons. And I, I think that, you know, okay, you have, I, yeah, I'm guessing the flood prone areas probably have higher, you know. And then you have those jurisdictions that may not have, or they struggle to keep a floodplain administrator. You know what I mean? So they probably have either, you know, just the one foot. But I think that those who, yeah, I don't have an answer, but I, I think that one foot is probably going to be common among, certainly common among those who don't update very often. And common among those who don't have as large a flood risk or area. But for those that have dealt with this, theirs is definitely more than a foot above.
And I certainly encourage two feet or three feet, right? And, and we need to remain in compliance with the FEMA standards.
Well, and we already are. We're.
Right, understanding. And that's at least to date, remaining at one foot. So, yeah, I'm just hesitant.
Sure. And like, I mean, the recent training I went to, it sort of reiterated this phrase, which is, it is the floodplain administrator's job, or the county's job, or the jurisdiction, to ensure that all new construction is reasonably safe from flooding. So that is up to us to interpret. So I guess it made me kind of realize, okay, we're not racing to the minimums, you know, that FEMA puts out there. We are doing our best to minimize flood risk to the extent that we can. That's reasonable. Reasonably safe, and not, not just reasonable regulation, but reasonably safe from flooding. So that we're saying, we're trying to encourage you to build so that you do not have to ever deal with, you know, and, you know, flood of record. I mean, if twenty-eleven happened again, a lot of that stuff's going to be wiped out no matter what. And so we're not going to tell them six feet. I mean, if we thought that was reasonable, we would tell them six feet. You know what I'm saying? But I think, I think racing to one or racing to BFE, whatever, I, I don't think that's the purpose, I guess, of the regulation.
Yeah. No, and I agree with your intent and the goal.
Yeah.
Again, I'm just pointing out that it's a substantial impact to a lot of houses who I don't think are aware that we're talking about this change.
Yes, for sure. And I will take any direction from the board.
So Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. Is twenty-five percent isn't very much?
Not a ton, yeah. What I will say though. So the idea of the limitations when you have grandfathering is that, okay, you're protecting what exists. It's like, okay, go ahead and have what exists. But the whole point of not allowing it to expand is that then it takes a stronger foothold. You know, that it's like, okay, if it's smaller, it's going to reach the end of its useful life faster. It's, that's kind of the idea, is that you just, you don't expand the use. If you look at a house that's almost half a million dollars, you know, you can put on a fairly substantial addition, you know, for, for two hundred and twenty thousand, two, two twenty, or two fifty or whatever. And so it depends on the real estate, really. You know what I mean? It's like you've got a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house that's like kind of dilapidated and you're like, let's put on an addition. You can't do anything.
Right.
You know.
That's what I mean, yeah. That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah. And we, we run into both, you know, in flood prone areas. I, I guess, I am suggesting this because I really, really have disliked running up against a FEMA minimum with a current applicant. You know, they are so close to that fifty percent, it makes me extremely uncomfortable. And I don't want us to be in that situation again. And so I am suggesting twenty-five so that it's like, they can go right up to twenty-five, you know. And if they, I don't know, had overruns or something, we're still not breaking FEMA rules. I would feel much more comfortable being in that situation. We can make it thirty, you know. Twenty-five is kind of a nice round number. You get to threes and decimals repeat. So that is my, that is the, kind of the whole purpose of doing that. And also just from FEMA training, just the suggestion that there are many communities that do less than fifty. And they kind of encourage that, so.
Well, what if someone buys another lot next to their beautiful home? And they want to put up a nice shop and then they, they have another shop and, you know. I mean. But the amount of land, I mean, would, it's, it's, it won't take much for it to be over twenty-five percent of your, the value of your home, especially if it's older.
So that won't matter because they're going to have to elevate that new structure. So if they elevate that structure, they can have it be very large. This is just talking about additions to homes where that home is not in compliance. So, like, it's, it's below where it should be at. It's very, floodplain stuff is so, it's so complicated. Like if there, if a person has a vacant lot in a flood zone and they want to build a new house and they elevate it properly, they can build a very large house. And if they elevate their addition, they can build a very big addition. We're just talking about houses that were below what was required or are below what we require now because they are at greater flood risk. And so it's like, okay, please don't expand your house. Or I should say, if you're going to expand your house beyond this twenty-five percent, you have to bring the existing structure, you have to elevate it to current standards. So in other words, this isn't affect, that wouldn't affect people who are building new who elevate properly.
Yeah, but a majority of these homes along some of those areas have been there for twenty years.
Or longer. Yeah, a long time.
Natalie, I just want to make.
They can't, they can't raise them.
Right, it's not, it's not feasible. So then they just keep them the size that they are, that was permitted in the beginning.
I was just going to say, and those are really the ones that are already at a foot and exist. That's really the only situation I'm talking about. Like, I, I very much support new construction needing to be at two feet. I'm just trying to get through that conundrum. No, I don't even, I mean, I, my, my main concern here is that it's impactful and I don't think they know about it.
Yes.
Right? And it seems like something that maybe we should directly reach out to people in those areas rather than just like buried in a code update paragraph, right? Like, that, that's my concern here. And that we need more discussion.
Because what if you add on to your structure that is not up to code right now, you know?
That's what this is for. That's what this means.
You can't add on more than twenty-five percent.
Of the value. Unless you bring the whole thing into compliance, which would mean elevating the structure. And the addition.
It's impossible for some of these homes.
Well, right. And I guess the, the point would be if you are under, if you are at significant flood risk, you should not be putting an addition on that home because you're just continuing to be at increased flood risk. That's the whole point of having those regulations. And, and to be quite honest, okay, so, you know, FEMA has, or flood insurance exists and it's getting used a lot, the, you know, disaster assistance, disaster relief. And the regulations exist so that people have to take measures to not put their structure in harm's way so that there's going to have to be a payout. You know there's going to be a payout because that flood is going to come. It's not if, but when. And that payout is going to have to happen. And the whole point of the regulation is to say, you need to elevate this so that you are reasonably safe from flooding, so that your house won't flood, and insurance has to pay you. That's the whole point. So to let those structures expand and continue to be even more valuable at that same high risk, that's what we're trying to avoid. It's like, okay, you've got your structure that's worth this much. Keep it that size. When you are below BFE or below what our regulations had said, do not add on to it. Just keep it the way it is. That's kind of the whole point. I mean, people can complain to their legislators and say, I want to put my house where I want to put my house. Let's just not have flood insurance. You just put it where you, you self-insure. I mean, we could do that and then people could just do what they want. But because there is insurance, that is why the regulations exist, so that that insurance can be mitigated somehow. Like in the beginning of the program, I think they went completely insolvent in like a couple of years. And so they're like, oh, look, we have to actually make people be careful about where they're building their stuff. So that's why these regulations developed.
But at least for now, the insurance mandate, the federal, federally mandated insurance would only apply to homes that are less than a foot below BF, or that aren't at least a foot above BFE, right? That's the FEMA regulation. That's not changing.
Right. Yes. It's just higher, you're going to have even higher premiums the further below BFE you are. And that's, I mean, that's part of the service in a way as well because it's like some people might not know how expensive your insurance is going to be. And if you build, you know, this home bigger and it's more attractive and then you try and sell it and, you know, then you have this market where, you know, we, we've let this happen. We've let this expand. You get an unwitting buyer. They buy it and they're like, oh, my gosh, look how much my flood insurance is. It, you know, we just, we don't want to create a situation where we are allowing this to happen that, you know, is not necessarily responsible to the consumer as well. I mean, you've got your, your property owner, but you've got your future property owners too to think about.
Well, anyway, you want direction here. What I understand, just to facilitate to Mr. President, I'd like you to contact those people who may not be aware of the L H requirements that could jeopardize or impact them. And then, once you contact them, they could come here and we could discuss whatever you do. That's what you need, right?
Um, if that is what you would like me to do, I can do that.
Well, I'm just going by what Mr. Chairman talked about here.
I'm just kidding.
And so, I mean, you know, unless you want to take a vote among the members here whether you should do that, I don't know what else to suggest.
Sure. I mean, I, I certainly don't need to burden everybody with a lengthy hearing. It's just my, my advice.
Because, because it was your opinion. It doesn't necessarily mean your values is on the same wavelength here. So I'm just bringing it out as a, as a consensus that's probably needed here.
I think so.
I do have a question. So my question is basically on the process is how this would work. If we just sent out some kind of a letter to these folks, do we have to have a hearing on it?
I mean, we could just say, guess what? I, I, I'm not saying this is what we should do. There's many ways you could do it. You could say, here we've got this draft of some land use code updates. And I'd probably just maybe point out the floodplain part, even though it's attached to others. And say, this could affect your, or this would affect your property. And then we can just notify them. Or we can say, here we're having this public hearing. Generally, I'd say if we're adopting new regulations, we would probably want to have a public hearing and, you know, have people be able to provide input. I'm pretty sure I can imagine what that input's going to be. But, but also they may think of scenarios on their own property that we haven't thought of. You know, it's like, okay, well, let's tweak that and push that and pull that in. So that absolutely can be done. I might suggest, I guess I might suggest a special meeting where it's not on a regular agenda item. Maybe, unless we get a really light November agenda, you know? Because I, I have no, I have no idea. I have no idea how many people would come to that hearing.
Yeah, that's just my concern is if we end up having a hearing, it's going to be one of those five hour meetings.
I think it could be. And the reason, and the reason I think that is because this is so complicated. I'm going to have to explain floodplain regulations for probably an hour to get people to the point where they know what in the world this will do.
Yeah, you're almost giving me like boards and a presentation and printups on the walls. And, you know, almost like you would have a public hearing kind of thing, like a public presentation.
Right. Public education, really.
Public education really is what it is.
Yes.
But we don't have to argue about them or get into the details of FEMA regulations and the merits of it. Most people who live in the floodplain are aware of the one foot regulation. We have to notify them that we're changing it to two.
But I'm saying, if they're going to provide input, they need to understand the whole universe of what this even means. Because I mean, I think if somebody tells me, well, you're not going to have to elevate to two feet, I mean, that's a no-brainer. I'm going to say, well, I don't want to do that unless I understand the context of why we're even asking them to do that.
And so how do we make it more complicated? I mean, the way I look at this, I'm too simplified. Well, if you go to two feet, you can't do this.
Sure.
This is going to happen. I mean, it's very basic in the way it's, I see, I don't see all kinds of complications.
It's, it's not, it's not quite so simple. It's if this, then this. If this, then this, under like maybe three different scenarios. You could have a, you can have your house that maybe you never want to do an addition. This will never affect you. You have a house that is one foot above. And if you want to put on an addition, then you'd have to. and if you want to put on an addition, then you'd have to, I mean, to my way of thinking, you know, we could set a date, I guess, where it's like if your house was constructed within these years or something, you know, that this does not apply to you and that it's just talking about pre-firm structures. You know, that's the one where it's like the biggest problem because we're, again, running up against FEMA minimums. And like I said, if we just limited this to pre-firm structures, and I don't even know how many are left out there, maybe a handful, that's really what I'm getting at. You know, if we're allowing 50% or... Yeah, I'm more concerned with new construction. I think, you know what we've done? We've conflated the SISD with this two-foot requirement. They have become conflated here in this discussion. So I think the 25% can be separated from this one-foot, two-foot conversation potentially and that the one-foot to two-feet is for all-new construction, not SISD or something like that.
Yeah, I'd be curious how Bismarck, when Bismarck changed to two feet and how they did it. And I agree that it would be a long hearing, I guess, and I know it would be one-sided. It just, it seems like that's our responsibility if we're making a change that impacts a certain number of properties, that we need to make sure they know about it.
Yes.
Yeah, but there's a difference between public education and then public input because a lot of times too, if people have a specific interest and their interest does not look at the big picture, specifically like their own, then you've got this conflict and you've got these long, because you're not going to satisfy the people that are focused on their particular interests, which don't concern the big picture that we're looking at.
Right, and we have to look community-wide.
For a whole lot of issues and things like that too. I mean, but if you're talking about simply letting these people know in the most simplified way they can understand, this is what we're doing and this is a result.
Sure.
You've been told.
Yep.
If you have any questions, give us a call.
Sure, sure, yeah, it's more of a courtesy, like here, this is happening. Absolutely, and we can do it that way too.
That'd be my way of approaching it, but that's not my decision to make.
Well, however we do it, we need a hearing. And, you know, if you're going to contact people that are in this floodplain, which is basically everybody along the river there, you know, there's the things that we have to do. So can't we bullet that and say, okay, this is what we have to do? So you can't say, well, can we go 1.2 inches or feet or whatever instead of two feet or whatever? No, it has to be this or whatever and whatever. And so then when we get to the hearing, okay, this is what we have to do. And if you have questions on what might happen or whatever, I think-
Give some education prior, in the letter.
Right, in the letter.
Yep.
And then this is when the hearing is so that they know because not everybody gets the paper and not everybody goes online.
Yes.
You know, they just get going with stuff and if all of a sudden they can't do this, then here they might plan on building or something.
For sure.
Chairman Natalie, you know where we're at?
I don't know.
I think we should either provide some specific direction here and have a unified chain of thought as how we're going to go here or just keep discussing this and not get anywhere.
Andy, what are your thoughts?
I'm rolling with it.
All right, Carter, what are your thoughts?
I think if we don't have to make the decision today and we're worried about future complications and people being upset that they didn't get to have their say, especially to your point, it's a big change. And I know FEMA doesn't want to pay out on their insurance and I get that, but I would be in agreeance with moving this to the next meeting or a special meeting, whatever works best, and sending letters out and getting public input too because I think there's a lot of question marks in some different pieces. So that would be where I sit on that.
Jackie?
I guess I feel the people have a right to know because we know that people don't read the Mandan News.
Right.
And don't get the Mandan News. And so I guess, and even though we put it in the paper, we put it on our webpage, I think they have a right to know and so we need to, I guess that's where I think we need to go.
Dennis?
Well, yeah, I, the only thing is I'd like to see a preface to the people that they have some pre-knowledge, so when they come in here, they're just not in law land or don't understand this. Like they got some direction that, the basics of what we're talking about. So it doesn't become confusing. So I'm, you know, public hearing, good, but if you get a bunch of people in and they don't fully understand some of the things that could have been explained to them, then you're complicated your process and then you're getting along drawn out. But that's what I like to see, you know, keep it simple, stupid.
Yes.
Maria, what about you?
I'm also a fan of the KISS method. I say that to my kids and my employees all the time. I do think that the public needs to know. I do think that public input is the important piece, but the avenue at which we do it, I think, is up for debate. That's my idea, that the debate is how do we do it? Like, do we send the letter? Do we have a public information session and then a hearing? Or do we have, you know, Natalie just doing public presentation and then a hearing? Or, you know, like, how do we do it? That is my idea of what the big question is.
Becky, what do you think?
I think at a minimum, of course, we have a hearing because I think this impacts a lot of people. And whether we just do a simple, I shouldn't say simple, not for you, but where we do a letter to the people that are affected in this area, you know, and, you know, give them some of the points that we have to, we have to do certain things and certain rules and whatever, you know, get that at least, okay, these are the rules that we have to follow. Now let's, you know, have the hearing on some of the questions on the gray areas.
Dwayne?
I guess I see both sides and I'm good with if we do a public hearing. I think the education piece is big because it is, it's confusing, what is, what isn't. My lot, part of my house sits here, the other part is up here at two feet. Is it okay to build there then because of the new addition? There's a lot of what-ifs coming into this, so, yeah. But I do agree, if you live there and we're going to make the change, that your new garage now has to be at two feet and your yard is going to be changing grade because you want to build a new structure there, you have the right to know that before you take it on.
I think what I can do, I can write a letter that'll have detail in it, but also put something online and have it referenced in the letter so that if people want interactive, you know, they can get all the color online. And then if they prefer to read a letter, they can read the letter. But it would be in a letter, you know, the link to something online. And say, "Please don't attend this hearing unless you've watched this presentation or read this letter in its entirety." No, I'm kidding. But just encourage people to read the thing or watch the presentation before they would come to a hearing. And then I guess my other question would be, do we want that as part of a future meeting? I'm not even going to say November. November's going to be quick and it's a lot, I think this is quite a, it'll be to do it right so that people can understand. I mean, maybe November works, but maybe say November or December, depending on what I can do.
Mr. Chairman, Natalie, would that be something that you could just feel out and determine?
Yeah.
You could do that and then, of course, you know, the different modes of communication, the letter. You can call here, ask questions.
Yes.
Or you can go online, I mean, whatever modes of communications
Yes.
can be centered on this would be good to do too.
Yep, and encourage people that, you know, here's this hearing that's available to you, but we encourage you to send your comments in, you know, ahead of time so that we can have answers for you either at the hearing or whatever, post-it online afterwards. And I think, I guess, when I really think about this, I almost wonder, November is towards Thanksgiving, December is towards Christmas, maybe for the sake of convenience, you know, maybe January is better. Even though I know this kicks in in January and I was hoping to have this done by then, but if we're looking for people to actually attend, that might be, that might be better. Although, I don't know, is November 20th? I mean, is that okay? Like, people aren't traveling by then, are they? Maybe they are, I don't know.
November 20th is hard for you, right? That's a fast turnaround to get the letters put together and sent out.
Yeah, because I, I don't, this is going to be a lot of letters, so, I mean, it's going to be, I mean, I can do it, it's going to take a while.
So I guess, sort of a separate question, can we adopt, do you want to do all the code updates at once to county commissions? So we want to hold everything until we do this? Or can we move everything else forward and just hold that?
Well, you can, we can do whatever we want. If the floodplain stuff, the floodplain stuff was the only time-sensitive stuff, really? And so if that is, that was kind of what I wanted to get done first and we're not going to get that done first, and so the rest of it can kind of come whenever. So I guess I would say maybe it's best to just do it all at once.
Okay.
And then that gives people also time, you know, we can say, hey, we're changing this floodplain thing, but if you've got comments on all the rest of it, you know, you can tell us. Seems like slightly unfair that we're only notifying floodplain people on stuff that affects everybody, but that's at least a bunch of people and people talk to each other. So it's way better than a advertisement in the Mandan News.
Yeah, and most of these other things are, I mean, general over the whole county, right? Like, the floodplain stuff is very specific to a quantifiable number of parcels.
Yes, yes.
And Natalie, did you remember that we have the DAC meeting on the 21st?
Okay. Yep, and that's kind of what I'm getting at, is like, I want to work on that because that's due first, you know, I mean, it's like, I can do anything. It's just we prioritize what we prioritize, you know what I'm saying? You tell me, you tell me what's a priority.
So is this not then going to be a public hearing?
No, it will.
I mean, tonight's?
Oh, yeah, good point.
Because it says public hearing here.
Yeah.
We just, we barely got through, we barely got through a small portion of it.
Larson's are just waiting to jump up to the podium.
Well, there's people online too.
Yeah, we should-
I know there's people online that wanted to talk.
Oh, there are people online that want to talk?
Well, I don't know, maybe they're gone by now because they figured we're not having one.
I think we had one person online.
Yeah, Terry's online.
Yeah. Okay, so let's, we'll start back, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. If there's anyone in the room or online that would like to speak on land use code updates, please go ahead and speak. Yeah, and if you're online, if you could just unmute and speak up anytime. Do second call for the public hearing. And Becky, do you know that this person wanted to speak? Is that, or you're just assuming?
No, she said her mic doesn't work.
Okay. I assume she could type something into the chat and Lacy could read it to us if that's the only option. Okay, third and final call for the hearing. And I will close the hearing. Okay, so maybe don't necessarily need a motion then on this, Natalie, but-
Yeah, I have, I think I have pretty clear direction. I guess as far as the rest of it, I was, I did want to know if you had comments on the rest of the changes.
There was nothing new, right?
Not really. Just the one part that I'm going to fix the wording for hazard areas for ADUs and change that to zoning administrator review for flood. Yeah. And then, yeah, other than that, nothing, other than the public hearing for a floodplain change and education outreach. And, you know, honestly, it is great to do floodplain education and outreach in general. So it's like, I don't know if we kind of turn it into a couple little statements about whatever else is pending and needs to be known about floodplain stuff in addition to saying, here's this change we're proposing to maybe make. So use it as floodplain education. Okay, to be brought forward again at my discretion, depending on what we've got going on.
So we don't need a motion to table this here pending?
No, no, nope. Just decide to move it to a future hearing. But it sounded like, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to ask if you want a direction from the board on whether this is on a normal meeting?
Yes, that was what I was going to ask, yep. Do we want it in a normal meeting or a special meeting?
So I guess I'll give my advice. I don't, I kind of agree with some of the comments, like I really just want to make sure that they're aware of it and that they feel heard and that we do listen to input before we make, you know, final decision. I could see this making sense as something of an open house with a hearing where we then, like, it's not just walking around, talking to you, and then that's it. I think there needs to be that public forum where they talk. That, if we wanted to do that type of thing, it'd be better for a special meeting, like more of an open house.
Yeah, I think so.
I don't know if that's the right approach though either. Maybe a presentation in a normal meeting. Defer to everybody else and their thoughts.
You know, it's possible to, you know, maybe a lot of people's questions get answered before the meeting. You know, if it's posted far enough in advance, you know, and really encouraging people to go to the website and check it out and call me, you know, and ask questions so I can explain it. But, yeah, it's really hard to say. So, I don't know, we can try to, you know, we can try it at a regular meeting and if it's just overwhelming, then we continue it.
Yeah, we'll certainly try to limit talking time.
Mr. Chairman, Natalie, one thing though, if we do put it with a regular meeting, it'd be good to know what kind of agenda we have for that particular meeting. You don't want to have this attached on to something that's-
That's already long.
Very long, because then it becomes too drawn out.
Oh, no, 100%.
It's difficult for people to sit out that long and-
Yeah, and it's basically when I send out letters, or what I should say is, yeah, it's really tough because I want to send out letters really far in advance so that they can go online and look at stuff, but then I have no idea, well, not no idea, some idea of what that next month or two months down the road that agenda is going to be like, but I don't know for sure. So that's, yeah, that's just kind of tough. I don't know.
And you can only do your best, right? As long as we don't have like large industrial facilities or large subdivisions, probably okay.
Yeah, which January is probably a good candidate for not having that happen. Yeah. Yeah, although, again, I never know. Retract came in February. But I did know about that one, that it was coming, so.
I recommend that we just have you use your judgment and do the best you can.
Yeah.
It might not end up perfect, but that's okay.
I'll do my best. Okay, sounds good.
Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Yep.
All my items.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, motion and a second, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.